This meeting is ordered with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's meeting is June 13th, 2016, and I'd like to take a roll call.
Aaron?
Here.
Capros?
Here.
Whalen?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Basil?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
We also have the meeting minutes. We need to approve them, May 23rd.
The second.
Motion and second, roll call.
Aaron?
Yes.
Capros?
Epstein.
Whalen?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Now we have recognition of the audience. Anybody wish to speak? Okay, then we get into the report of village commissions. GL, beautification commission.
Good evening, from where we came here at seven o'clock.
Fourth of July commission.
Yeah, things moving along at a pretty good pace. We're getting ready for the fourth. Storage building is all but complete, I guess, and I want to compliment several members of our commission that spent hours and hours working like crazy to get this building done and have done a terrific job. They're to be commended. Yeah, the last minute touch-ups are being taken care of. We'll have a work day scheduled and so far, so good.
Good. Youth commission?
That's a new report.
That's a new report.
Ribbon of Hope, Friday. The foundation for the ribbon has been poured. They're waiting on the final grade and then Mike Stanula is going to get the wiring in there for lighting after the final grade and then we're going to start the papers, so hopefully within a week or so.
Okay.
We'll start doing final grade before the fourth. Yeah, hopefully. The ribbon itself is being painted, but plus the concrete has to cure for a little bit, so we really can't install that maybe another couple of weeks, so it's going to be cutting it close for... I would love to have it in there for the fourth, but that's all up in the air right now. That's it.
The historic preservation commission, we meet the third Tuesday morning every month. We have reached out to the township to see if we can get a commission, a member of their board to be on the commission. Just for the fact that, you know, there's a lot of talk as far as the historic preservation of Beecher and that kind of goes into the country, into the township and so forth, and we were just looking for some type of link there between the Washington Township and the village. I don't know if you know, but Ken had identified nine one-room schoolhouses in Washington Township, you know, so that's kind of amazing in itself. And I think if we do a lot of our advertising and promotion for our historic, I think that should be part of it too, because it's part of the community, you know, as far as Washington Township, so that's kind of where we're at. We're still looking at, I think I showed pictures of the plaques that we were looking at to put on different buildings, you know, as far as when it was constructed and so on, so we're still looking at that. We also were prepared to have a visit from HT Miller's, I think it was a great-granddaughter, was due here one day and we had it all set up and then we received a call that she could not make it. So she was going to try to make it for the following Monday and couldn't make that either, so that would have been kind of a good link. She was coming into town just to get some history on her great-grandfather and we're... And Don was going to take her out in a golf cart to look at all the pastures that, you know, the cattle used to graze on, so that's kind of where we're at as far as historic preservation, but it's moving on.
We were at a township meeting and the township expressed the same interest in getting involved.
Right.
And they've pledged George O'Bryant, which is a liaison.
Right.
And it depends on whether we put him on the commissioner act, it would be up to the mayor, but he is the liaison, so
Okay.
if you can advise him where your meetings are now.
Yeah, I have already talked to him and I talked to the township about it, so... But we're moving forward with that, so that ends my report on the historic preservation. And I'm going to turn it over to Marcy as far as treasurer's report.
Yeah, I'm going to turn it over to Lynn as far as the treasurer's report.
Okay, at the end of May of this year, we had, in our village accounts, we had $1,606,754. This was a decrease from last month of $81,000. That $81,000 basically was paid on two large loan payments that we needed to make. Even at that figure, we are still, if you look at the graph, we are still riding the ballpark for this period of the year from last year and now, and so we're holding our own here. The other major purchase in our commissions, of course, was the Fourth of July car, which was paid for in cash. And it was, let's see, $24,999. So that raffle is always quite, quite good. I know an awful lot of the tickets have already been sold, so that pretty much covers what we have going on this, this month. If you look at the commission non-aident payments, you'll see all three of those items listed. The two loans under Waters of the Set and of course the car I did for the fly.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the treasurer's report and report financial activity for May.
Second. Motion and second, roll call.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Whalen?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
The variance reports are also enclosed for your review and then the bills were enclosed in the packet and we actually have a few more, $3.52. Police Department vehicle supplies, $1,550.80 for phone service. $3.75.99 for pre-day hardware, $90 for Digital Alley, $1,075 for, I don't know how you call that, skater repairs and updates, $3,305.77 for HD Waterworks Supply, $148.75 for Illinois State Police Bureau, $120 for Linger Crew for cleaning, $408 for Motorola, and $50 for Testet and Associates. So the new total is $115,079.68 and I'd like to make a motion to approve the bills of May for $115,079.68.
I'll second. Motion and second, roll call.
Aaron?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Whalen?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes. Last, Fourth of July commission is requesting a short-term loan in amount not to exceed $25,000 from general fund for a period not to exceed 10 days as a cash flow advance. I passed out, for anybody who's interested, a copy of the budget and the report from Fourth of July commission in case you have questions. There's sort of a snapshot sheet on the front that just kind of gives categories of revenue and categories of expenses and then the full budget is attached for anyone who wants to take a look at that. The big difference from prior years is we had a slightly, well, we no longer have the protected reserve amount because we ran below that last year for when we did the beer stand project. So this year, since they did the building prior to the Fourth of July Fest, a lot of the money flowed out before the money is coming in. So actually, there's a, it says here that the current amount in the account is $20,000, it's actually $11,896.16. We have some things coming up. There's probably a little over $8,000 for printing the brochures. We're going to have payable to stuff the brochures in the newspapers. We have a new beer company, so I'm not sure whether we're going to have to pay in advance for that.
Some beer deposit.
There's usually a, I don't want to get into details, but a specific amount that we use for treasurer's booth to open up the fest. We're actually going to look at opening up at a slightly lower amount because we think that might have been a little more than what we need, but still, we need the first night, the band gets paid and, you know, you have to be able to give a cash fund to the booths that open. I know we're going to get, we got a few more sponsorship checks in today. We're going to be getting more for tickets for Fourth of July, but I am not sold on the fact that we will have enough cash to open with. Hopefully, we will and we don't have to bother borrowing the money, but just in case, we'd like to have that little bit of a backup in case we need the money.
Is I a 10-day cash?
He's a 10-day loan. Hopefully, within the first two days, it's no longer an issue, you know. If the weather holds up and we do well the first couple of days, then it's just a matter of each day having enough to open up, you know, for cash for the booths, but just on the outside chance that we have any other issues with weather, et cetera, or anything unforeseen comes up, money-wise that I haven't seen, we would like to have that cushion. So I will make a motion to authorize a short-term loan to Beecher Fourth of July Commission in an amount not to exceed $25,000 from the general fund for a period not to exceed 10 days. And that would be between June 27th to July 7th as a cash flow advance.
I'll second.
Motion made, seconded. Roll call.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Whalen?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes. That ends my report.
Okay, do we have any old business? Your business?
I'll turn it over to Chair Kurt Wurz, who just found out about it tonight. Anybody, do you want to fill them in about this water main on Penfield Street and this proposal that we received?
Well, yes and no, but as I always hang there, glad you're in the first five minutes of the movie. Hey, the water main in front of the, there's like 240 feet of water main that needs to be replaced. The carbon is being sucked out of it. Frank was over there today. We marked it off, measured it. The idea is to probably go in there and replace it with four-inch and tap into the fire department so they would be, wouldn't be without water. The other two, and also a service line to the post office, but the other two service lines to the community hall would be taken care of and not be compromised, and the one to the church. There's a couple problems there. I have a not-to-exceed dollar amount. I think the bid came in at $19,000. The problem is, I've had seven water main breaks over there and the last one was pretty ridiculous. We don't have to worry about that under the village hall again, but if I have four more of those, that, you know, you're looking at five grand apiece just to repair it, okay? What we looked at today was the proposal for them doing the labor, us providing the material through MFT and having all of that asphalt work done and included in the price so it doesn't look like Beirut in the front there. Plus, I don't know, I cannot guarantee you that between now and the time we have, I know we're replacing the water main on Penfield Street, but I have no guarantee that we are not going to have a few other water main breaks there. So it's like spending $20,000 on an insurance policy, so, and that's up to you guys. I don't know.
This is a four-inch main, right?
Yes.
So it's temporary.
It's temporary. It's not, no, because you're going to increase it to eight inch when the Penfield project grows in. The other thing I'm worried about is that every time we have a water main break, we have that 36-inch elliptical storm pipe and even the last one we dug up, it's like right next to it. If the, and it's been cracked for a long time. It's scheduled to be replaced and, or kind of point of repair during the project, but if that thing go, you know, if it blows out on the sides anymore, you know, we all, we're running a chance of literally, you know, a fire truck pulling out and it'll drop to its axles. So there's a couple of other pending issues that are there, which is why, you know, I would say a decision needs to be made and I don't want to wait until next month and have two more water main breaks and there we're out of, you know, 10 grand, so...
And this is PVC pipe?
Yeah, C900.
And they're directionally ordered, this?
Yeah, they're going to dig like three pits and then, like you said, worst case, I don't even see that happening, but there's, even if I was to, there's a section of main in front of the community hall that if that, we've got so much PVC in there, there might be five feet that isn't, that hasn't already been replaced. Even if the event was to rupture there, we have the ability of not really losing any water flow to anybody, so...
Okay, we would spend this money doing full well and when we replace all of Penfield, this pipe is going to be abandoned as well. Is that correct?
I would think so, yeah, but what are you going to do? Or you can, I would imagine if you really chose to, you could actually probably tie it into your new storm that was there and add, you know, another drain tile to it from the alley, but you're basically looking from the valve that we replaced in front of the church down to the bell where the community hall was at.
Would you get two new valves out of this?
Yeah. No, just one.
Just one?
T compression fitting, and we don't have to worry about the fire department being without water at any point in time. They said three days and everything's done. I'm not sure where the EPA's at or what we're going to do. I don't have any guarantees that we're not going to run a, you know, get into a loggerhead. Alls I know is, we've had seven in the last month and a half over there and I'm not real comfortable.
There is no guarantee that that water main is going in if we don't have the state budget.
That's correct. I don't know. I've seen it before. We had the whole project.
They're slowing down their review process because of no state budget and it's a bureaucratic game. So I don't know when that, the loan could get approved in August, it could get approved next year. I don't know.
I know the mayor will...
But this whole thing is a gamble and I, he is right, two or three more breaks and you probably pay for the pipe. And we had two breaks, what, in the last 30 days?
Oh, we've had, yeah, we've had over seven of them.
No, in the last 30 days.
On the last, yeah, probably about seven.
No.
Oh, yeah.
No, 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 no. Two.
Village Hall, Birch Street.
Village Hall is not being...
Three. We're not considering that a main break?
No, that has nothing to do with the section of pipe you wanted to close.
Oh, okay, but we had a main break that was put in at the same time, okay. Four.
I think we had two breaks there in the last month, but they were bad ones.
Oh, yeah, to dig it up and then turn around and re-dig it back up.
Well, that's where we're at. We're looking for, we can't vote on this tonight, but we can reach a consensus that the board, because it is under 20, it could be authorized, but it's up to what you guys feel. It's a gamble.
When will the work start?
They, he told me that he could have it done, everything done in asphalt within three days of being approved.
So if we approve it tonight, he's going to have this done by Friday?
Well, I ain't saying I promise him that. Probably next Friday.
Well, that's what you said.
No, he said it'd take, take five minutes, three days. Mr., you know what, I'll, the trustee, Frank was over there. You know, he, if he had any questions, he was there.
When can he start to work?
I guess you'd have to give me...
Trustee, aren't you asked a question, when can he start?
I would imagine it has, it has to be scheduled, but it would be probably significantly quickly, fast. Next week sometime.
So you don't know?
No, he told me it would take three to five days. I'm sure he's scheduling other jobs, you know, and he knows that, well, you know, we would have to have it done, you know, expedited, which is why I got a proposal and it was presented today. I met with him this morning. Greg was pretty, the mayor was pretty adamant about me getting a price to see what we could do to prevent that. We looked at a couple of different options, like even going down to a two-inch, but I think that would be bottom necking the system way too much to where it would restrict the flow. It could potentially cause problems somewhere else. The four-inch, I think, would be restricted going from a six to a four. We're only losing two inches.
You said 240 feet. That goes from the community hall up to the...
From the edge of the community hall, probably right past, to the valve right in front of the, not the church, but, well, it's in front of the church, but it's in front of the office part of the church.
This would be directionally boring. You wouldn't trudge across it, right?
No, he said he was going to drill it and push it. There's going to be like, there'd have to be like three, three areas dug up because he's got to tie into where the four-inch going into the fire department is at.
How many years before this Penfield project's going to start? Two, three?
No, not even.
It's supposed to, the warning's supposed to be this fall.
Oh, really?
It's supposed to be.
That's if you get the money.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there's been, unless there's some emails I haven't seen, there's been absolutely no indication from the facts around that there's any sort of delay on that. Last, we had Derek here when he did like a slight overview on a bunch of our projects. Everything was on schedule. Unless there's something, I don't know.
I don't believe our... I'm not as optimistic as they are because I see the games that are being played. They're going to keep a positive note because they want to keep pushing forward, but we still don't have our, our financial plan approved by IUPA for the water. I haven't seen it. And that's what, that's what concerns me to some extent, but this is truly a gamble. I mean, if you decide not to do it, you'll probably have breaks. If you decide to do it, then the loan will probably come through and this fall we're replacing it. It's a, it's a rock and a hard place.
We're also replacing the asphalt that patches that are there. You need to consider that too.
All right, I got two questions. One, on this proposal, it says temporary six-inch wire. Not four. So is it six or four?
When I talked to him, it was, Frank wasn't a four?
He said four.
Yeah.
The proposal says install 200 feet, 240 feet of six-inch temporary water main.
He's paying for the labor. I don't think there's a big difference between installing a four and a six other than our cost. We're providing the material.
So on a directional board, you're telling me there's no difference between a four, a six, an eight, a 10?
Oh, you got to be there, don't you?
Let's go.
Yeah, I would imagine there would probably be not significantly.
So my next question is, pay 400 square yards of two-inch temporary asphalt. Belligerent Beecher to supply all material and MJ Underground will supply labor only. So does that mean we have to buy all the asphalt also?
Yes, and he's going to bring his machine in and do it.
So he's not going to subcontract that out?
No, he does, no, he does the asphalt work.
That would be done by MJ?
Yes.
What do you anticipate the cost of the 400 square yards of asphalt, two-inch thing?
I don't have that for you right at this moment.
What do you anticipate the cost of 240 feet, six-inch water main and new valve costing?
I can give you direct prices tomorrow morning. I mean, the, the valve, a couple hundred bucks. The pipe, I can't remember what I paid you last.
Are we pricing six or four?
I thought we were probably four.
It probably would have been $5,000 in water main material. The valve would have turned 40 feet of six, if it's six.
Okay, so you're $19,000 plus $5,000 in materials plus how much for the?
Asphalt.
Asphalt. Is it cold or hot for?
I would assume it would be a hot patch at 400 square, 400 square yards, two-inch thing.
Can you, can you get it to the job site hot with our trucks?
Yeah.
That's probably running about 80, maybe a ton. Job that group is probably going to be above 50 ton.
So another four grand.
Another four grand.
So now you're going to...
I'll take it back because he's not crunching, he's boring, right?
Right, but we have, but we have, it's like Beirut over there right now, Bob. Either way, you're going to pay for the asphalt.
He hasn't, he hasn't bid for the labor to pay 400 square yards of two-inch temporary asphalt. So if you're going to do less, the, this should be reflected in the cost of labor.
Yeah, I'm trying to convert the yards to tons because you buy asphalt by the tons, but...
These are things we need to know before we make a decision like this.
Right, but that eight, eighteen, nineteen just became thirty.
When this, this, yeah, this $19,000 repair, when it's said and done, it's going to be $30,000 and this is, this is truly a bandy. What we're doing is we're saying, okay, it's costing approximately $4,000 to $5,000 and we've gone through this many times, is what our costs are when we do water main break repairs and, you know, we've talked about, you know, hours on equipment, you know, overtime hours for guys because it can happen anytime in the day, materials, so on and so forth, stone for backfill, everything else. So what we're looking at here is, okay, we have some things coming up in the area. You know, do we want to ensure that something doesn't happen over those few days that could cause a major headache? You know, is, is $30,000 worth it? That's the question. I honestly, I don't know what to say because I haven't looked and seen where the 240 feet are that's being replaced, how many actual breaks we've had on that section of main, anything. I basically found out about this today.
I sort of did.
I, I mean, I heard little bits about it last week and then I knew it was kind of coming up, but I wasn't expecting that.
When was the time on that fence, John? I don't, I think we saw it about 3:30.
12:30.
12:30.
So I'm working midnights right now. I was asleep during the day. Nobody tried to call me during the day, but I was asleep. It's like somebody trying to call anyone else at, you know, 2:00 in the morning.
If the issue is a carnival, we could push them back into the grass for a year if we had to. I don't think we should look at it from that point of view. I think we should look at it from a cost-benefit analysis. How many breaks can you afford before it matches?
So if that's the case, then it's not that big of a rush to make a decision tonight then, correct? If we're looking at it as that, as a cost-benefit analysis, if we're looking at it as that, we should have another two weeks till our next meeting and we can get all our ducks in a row rather than looking at effects that came over at 12:30 and making this uninformed decision right here and now.
Then we have to push the carnival into the grass. That's what, that would be my recommendation. Because we wouldn't get it done before the Fourth of that time.
Yeah.
No, then we just push it into the grass. I mean, that...
My, my question to me right now is whether or not to approve, what we do with the carnival or anything like that that's not bearing as to my decision here with this.
That's correct. It should be. They can move it.
So, you know, let's discuss what's at hand here and it's, it's this and I don't know. Like I said, I, I, I just got this. I mean, you walked up to me 10 minutes before and handed me this proposal and, I mean, we don't know true cost of what our end of it's going to be.
Should we, Mr. President, should we defer this to the committee to decide? Whether we job it from?
I think we can. It just all depends on how much money we're talking. I mean, we're going to need to have board approval of anything over 20, correct?
To one vendor, yes.
It's not going to be one vendor. Yeah, I guess we could refer it to the committee.
I, I don't know what anyone else's thoughts are. I mean, I haven't heard anything. If, if it's going to be referred to committee, I want to know what every single person sitting up here is, their opinions and thoughts are on this because I'm not going to make a decision. You know, I'll be happy to take this on in committee and, and act on behalf of the board and, and make the best decision possible, but I got to have feedback and know what everybody sitting here's thoughts are on it because I don't want to act on something and then the rest of the board be like, well, why did you do that? You know what I mean? I, I want to know everyone's thoughts, you know, and...
I got to be honest with you. I, I'm kind of in the same boat you are. I'd like to know what the final dollar amount is. Yes, if it's going to be $20,000 to one vendor, yes, committee can certainly approve it, but I'd kind of like to know what it's going to blossom into. Is it going to blossom into 25 or 30 or 40? You know, if you're talking 30 and if it's approximately $5,000 per main break, you're talking about six to seven main breaks.
It'll cost you 30.
Yeah, so you're talking approximately six water main breaks and you're at the break-even point. If there's more than that, it would have been cheaper to do the repair, but we're kind of all at the same point. To my thinking, this is just me, but I don't know what the dollar amount is.
But I would strongly recommend to the Fourth of July commission to move the carnival because the propensity for that main to rupture is high. You know what I mean? You know what I mean, and it's gonna rupture right in the middle of that period there. It could have happened last year too, it didn't. But we couldn't have it in the grass, there's no way we could get stuff in there.
Yeah.
So I would suggest that if it's dry, we put it in the grass, cause we can't afford to have that main rupture. Now, we talked about turning it off, but we can't, cause in the first.
Let's, let's not talk about where the carnival's gonna go, let's talk about this, this, this is what my concern is.
And I have a feeling that's, that's where some of the, the sense of, of let's get this done is because we're worried about the carnival, but it's, we've gotta have the numbers in order to be able to make that decision.
I personally think it's a lot of money to spend right before we're gonna do this, this big project.
Yeah, I know, I, I can't see that.
You know, and then we say that and then all of a sudden we have all these breaks, you know, so.
Well, the other thing is, I got a bunch of patchwork, but we're in front, you're gonna spend a couple thousand dollars and I'm not sure the exact dollar amount for all the patches that are in front of there. I hate nothing more than have, I hate putting brand new asphalt on it and then turn around having to rip it back up, so. Um, there's three prices that I can get Jonathan and Frank before the end of the week here. Um, I know, you don't have to make any decision tonight, direction, you know, like I said, I met with them this morning. Brought you the information. It's up to you guys, I understand, understand everything.
I, I understand where Jonathan's coming from too, because it's, it's a, a good chunk of money to refer to, to the committee.
Yeah.
I don't know, Ron, what do you, what do you think?
I don't know, seems like a lot of money just for a band-aid. And then next fall or something like that, we tear it all out again.
Possibly this fall, winter.
That's what we hope for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it was gonna be a year from now, I might be more inclined to say, yeah, let's do it, but if it's this fall, it's a little tough.
It's one of these things where we, we don't know when this is gonna happen.
I have, no, if I could, you know, if I could do that, Ron, I wouldn't be working here.
Well, we talk about, it's not an emergency, we can wait a couple of weeks, uh, what are we saying?
Well, if, if it, if it breaks, it breaks, you know, we gotta go in there, shut it down and fix it, you know, and that's, and it costs approximately five thousand dollars every time that thing, you know, water main breaks. I mean, and that's the way that, that's, no offense, but it's about it. I mean, my problem is that I gotta give you the bad news and the good news, the good news is that in another year we'll have, we won't have this problem. Bad news is we're dealing with right now.
Yeah.
Um, either way, um, if you don't put that in, you know, now you decide not to and hold off and roll the dice, that's just the way it is. But then I also have to pull the trigger on getting all that asphalt work done in front of that, um, the fire department and in front of the approachment right now.
You had mentioned that there's only a certain amount of feet that, of the old pipe left in there.
Well, I put in, yeah, remember, I, we, we.
It's basically a giant clamp.
Yeah, I mean, pretty soon it's gonna be all stainless steel, I don't.
The stainless steel water main, yeah.
What, together.
So are we isolated to a certain spot?
I have it, yeah, like I said, the two hundred and forty feet is very questionable to me. And, you know, you can go from that bell all the way to pass the alley, about twenty-five feet. And everything else going to the corner is plastic. Cause remember I had that big trench out there and replaced, uh, sixty feet of main.
Is there any way you can valve it down and just tell the fire department they can't fill their tanker at the station and?
The problem, you, you have three, the problem is the fire department and the post office, okay? That's the only two service lines, if I was to shut that thing down, that's the two that would be without water.
You're probably running.
I mean, I'm, I'm not fighting, I'm not going.
You know, just something else to put in perspective, we installed recently, over the past couple of years, we've installed new water main. Brand new water main, not temporary water main, brand new water main. Maxwell Street. Cost of that was just under a hundred thousand, it was ninety-eight thousand dollars. Okay, you're, when this is said and done, you're looking at almost a third of that, replacing a whole block of new water main with brand new service, uh, tap-ins and everything else for a whole block of houses. Bird Street cost us under sixty. Right? And, and we're looking at a thirty thousand dollar.
Well.
Band-aid.
Time out. Why don't we just upgrade it to eight inch and then that's two hundred and forty feet worth of C nine hundred or nine oh nine that they, they can't, why? Then they attach on to that, they attach on to.
We designed a water main, the first thing D P's gonna say is where's your permit?
It's an emergency, it's only two hundred and forty feet, it's gotta be three hundred and sixty feet to ask for a, a permit.
Neil, what do you think?
My personal opinion would be, I think we should take the gamble. That's a lot of money to spend for a band-aid.
If we weren't gonna rip it up in months. That's a lot of money, thirty thousand dollars.
Sounds like the opinion is, is, you know, um, it's a lot of money, yeah, for, for making another.
Well, we don't know for sure that it's gonna happen this fall, but.
It's, excuse me, if this bursts or whatever it does, uh, during the carnival, uh, how fast can we shut it down?
Matter of minutes, minute I get the call, go on, shut two valves down, that'll be it.
So what effect do you?
I, I hate to move this carnival back out in a few.
Well, you are gonna be moving it, cause if they gotta tilt the world on top of it, you're gonna be taking a tilt-a-world down. I can shut it down, but it's not gonna be repaired.
Well, it's the electronics that are on the ground too.
Yeah, you got all them wires.
What we will have to do is when they set up, we're gonna have to keep a clear area over that water main. Make sure they don't put anything on top of that area just in case we have a problem.
Cause we've got such good response from citizens, I love the carnival, since they didn't have to crush it, but.
I didn't say the decision was gonna be, like I said, they.
Well, no, I understand.
I'm just here to give you the information that I possibly can. And really got, um, I wish I would have had more time, um, and handed numbers from Josh, but he was, today was the first day I had the ability to meet with him, and these were the findings. Uh, tomorrow morning I can give you exact dollar amount as to, um, A, B, and C pipe and stone and everything else, you know, that's, that's not a big deal. Then if you're not gonna go that route, then I have All-Pro coming in paving, that's gonna give me prices for those patches.
I think we should probably go, if we let the carnival set up, keep a twenty-foot path toward the main open. So if it doesn't, we can get in there and fix it.
I, I don't really remember much being right there in the middle of the street, like it was all in the parking lot and then it crossed over to the other side of the street.
Yeah, I think the tilt-a-world was up in that vacant lot, wasn't it, next to the?
Cause we got so many good complaints on, I mean, good comments on the fact that we moved it in the parking lot. Just have to keep that water main open.
I know there, yeah, I know there was one that was sitting over in front of the community hall, um, by the bridge, I'm not, just a road.
In all fairness, in all fairness to the mayor who's not here tonight, he didn't know the final numbers either, what it was gonna cost, he didn't have a clue, you know?
You'd be, uh, when, when we've had water main breaks on Penfield Street, we're not talking about geysers blowing out of asphalt, all right? Water comes up and it starts running down the street, okay? This isn't that big of a deal, you'd be better off and cheaper to pay a public works employee on call for the hours of the fest. And having a guy right there on site that could have this thing valved down and shut down in a matter of minutes rather than waiting for a call to come in, you know, and them to actually get here on site, than paying this kinda money to, to do that. You're better off paying two public works employees overtime, if our guys, if our guys are bone, keep them on site the whole time, sit here and watch this and make sure, if you see any water, shut it down immediately.
Even have the valve, you have it right on?
I mean, I mean, I mean, seriously, I mean, versus thirty thousand dollars, I mean.
Thirty thousand dollars is a lot.
To tick, to dig it up and tear it back out again in, in six months is.
So buddy, can you pitch a tent?
I live here anyway, can I stay in a beer tent? I'll be doing.
You're probably right, yes.
So now when you shut it down, what, it's just the fire department and the post office?
Post office, and then you wait till the fest is closed for the night, you come in, you fix it overnight, you do your, you know what I mean? You bust your butts and you stone it and you can't, you scam patch it and that's it.
Yeah.
The post office is gonna be closed from noon on Saturday until Tuesday, so. Right?
So I, I think the consensus is to.
Keep this, keep this, as a, this proposal as needed, and if it comes to an emergency situation where we need to do it, we can review it again at that time. But at least we got the proposal, we know what the costs are.
Yeah, and if we should get some terrible thing happens, we're gonna, we're not gonna get the project approved for an entire year and we get hot weather coming, we always have an opportunity to.
To take care of this, yeah.
I think that's a smart.
Yeah, first water main break you get, if you find out that, that the project's not approved, like Marcy said, then you.
It's through the whole thing, right? By that time we would have some better numbers, find out what the materials are and, and everything else. I think we still should get those figures.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Well, I have them for him tomorrow, since I'm not calling, you know, Jack, it was just, uh, said two, you know, reducers and one valve and a pipe.
But what I'm hearing is the board would like, we're just not gonna go ahead and do something like this, you would have to come back to the board for a decision.
All right.
Right, right, I think it's too much for a committee to make a decision like this.
You get the information, you digest it and who knows, you might change your mind in two weeks if you have some main break out in front. You know, but in the meantime, I am under the assumption that, uh, All-Pro, I go ahead with my patches in front of the firehouse and all that, right?
Absolutely, that's, yeah, that's standard, that's standard operations, get it done before the fourth.
Exactly, okay.
I have one other thing, Scott, just had an update for the board, uh, we received a settlement with the insurance company, it's gonna be in the area about thirty-two thousand with P D.
Okay.
Yeah, and we sat down today and had a meeting, and our expenses to bring everything up to snuff was about twenty-six thousand if I remember, and we had nine thousand left for inventory that we lost. So we're gonna be able to get the police station floor restored for at or less than the claim that we settled. But it's been, it's been a work in progress, it's been a nightmare. Now, the guy that, the guy that's gonna fix the room that was damaged was the same guy that did this village hall, he was the lowest bidder. Um, I think we have exclusive interiors, it's gonna do the cleaning of the rest of the building, and AmeriClean's gonna do the ducts. Uh, L and H already did the H V A C, that's done, and we have, we're already over at doors fixed at garage doors.
Was, was the H V A C, okay, cause it was running, the bed was there.
I believe it was, and he, they were only there for a day, they got everything running, it was the hot water heaters that took the hit, but the furnaces were okay. But it was a mess.
I'll tell you what, the police department has put up with a lot, you know, so we appreciate that, you know, because I know they're in, uh, getting through, you know.
Well, I'm putting together a little slideshow that maybe I'll have it ready by next, uh, board meeting. Couple of videos, some pictures and just kinda summarize. And when you see the force of water from two different angles on the camera, and within three minutes, it's like two bays were like swimming pools. I mean, if this didn't happen, a shift change, I can only imagine probably what it took out our garage doors.
Well, none of that, but public works was already on scene with a water main break on Penfield, you still had to get the valve shut.
Right, so within three minutes it was discovered.
But the good news is it shouldn't be a burden to the village as far as cost, other than the M and J bill we're gonna get from, from the service line, the outside.
Two-inch line coming, yeah. Any other new business? Bob, you, uh, you can't put this in my, uh?
Yeah, that was just an example, I, I, I did the wrong button, I ended up with even, so I think by leftovers, I was just splashing those around. That is not what we're looking at for the whole street.
Okay.
Um, we had, well, we'll get into that next board meeting, but we had a bid for composite decking and was, I was.
Oh, yeah.
So we're going back to lumber again.
All right.
Any, uh, new business, any more new business, we need a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call.
Aaron? Charles?
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
Damon?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.